Meeting of Harvard Zoning and Planning Commission. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carbonetti?
Present.
Albertson?
Here.
Creviston?
Here.
Greshap?
Here.
McCafferty?
Here.
Quormus, present.
Any public comment on anything other than what's on the agenda? There being none, we need a motion to approve the commission meeting minutes of May 7th, 2024.
A motion to approve the meetings minutes.
Second. Please call the roll.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
To open the hearing, the petitioner seeking text amendments to unified development ordinance. Amend section 3G principal use standards. Amend section 8.3H principal use standards. Amend table 5.1 residential districts dimensional standards. Amend section 5E, 115E, parking lot for landscape yard. And amend sections 9.6 fences. Donovan, do you have anything to add to your staff report? Want to go ahead and present the petition?
So... Staff is seeking planning zoning's consideration for several amendments to the UDO. With the recent, we'll call it housing boom that we've been seeing lately, a lot of the items that you see within your packet have come up during this process of helping developers construct in town. The UDO was adopted in 2018, wasn't really put into practice because we didn't have a lot of homes being built. And once we got into it with the several developers that we're working with, there were some issues that all of them were facing as it relates to what you're seeing in here. So Chairman, would you like to go through them one by one?
Why don't we?
You don't mind?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Some of the challenges related to, and which we all heard when there was a variance petition before you from Greenway Properties previously, as it related to the illustration depicted in section R.3. H. of the UDO and the text found in the sections that accompany that, 1 through 5 and A through D. The sections... We'll start with 8.3. H. .4. And the illustration descriptions D and C, this is on page 2 of my memo. They state that front-loaded attached garages are limited to 60% of the width of the front building line or 22 feet, whichever is greater. It also states that garage width is measured between garage doors. In the case of garages designed with multiple garage doors, the distance is measured between the edge of the outmost doors. And the illustration description C shows the width of the building line being from one side of the structure to the other side of the structure. However, the building line is defined in section 2.3, the definition of general terms, as a line measured at the building wall of a structure between parallel lot lines. And for the purposes of establishing a building line, the building wall does not include permitted encroachments of architectural features such as bay windows, eaves, steps, and stoops. So the illustration shows the lines being from one edge of the house to the other and not from one lot line to the other lot line. We take that point from the front of the building and from lot line to lot line, and we do that because there's irregular shaped lots, like on the instance of a lot being on a cul-de-sac where it could be a pie-shaped lot. So they look for, I guess, a principal point where you could take that measurement from, and that being the front of the house, not including any architectural features. So staff is requesting that the measurement should be taken as described in the text and not in the illustration, and if you agree, we would amend the illustration to match the text. But I further want to state that in the UDO, there's, in the beginning, there's a section 1.3F that states, "Any illustration, graphics, and/or photos contained in this ordinance are to assist the reader in understanding and applying the ordinance. If there is any inconsistency between the text of the ordinance and any such illustration, graphic, and/or photo, the text controls unless specifically stated otherwise." So in this instance, when we're looking at the illustration, we don't go by the illustration, we go by what the text says. And the text showing or stating lot line to lot line. So that's item 1. Any questions or comments on that?
Comments from the commission?
Where does it state about lot line?
It doesn't. The diagram, item C, I guess, you know, in front of the house there was...
Right, it shows from outside of the garage to the outside of the garage. Correct?
Well, there's two Cs. It's a little confusing. So the bottom C, let's say, the widest one shows from the edge of the house to the edge of the garage. So from both sides of the principal structure. That depicts the... That's saying, so then if you look at the verbiage for item C, "Front-loaded attached garages are limited to 60% of the width of the front building line or 22 feet, whichever is greater." So then the UDO defines building line as what I described before being from lot line to lot line.
Where does it say that in the UDO?
That's in the definitions. And it's defined in section 2.3. Building line is defined in section 2.3, definition of general terms. You've got your book there with you? A line measured at the building wall of a structure between parallel lot lines. And then it goes on further to describe the, what the building or the building wall would be. "The building wall does not include permitted encroachments of architectural features such as bay windows, eaves, steps, and stoops."
Building line should be your setback from the lot line, correct?
From the front yard lot line?
Right, either way.
Well, the building line here is defined as the front of the house. That determines where your, that's what we would measure to your setback. So if there's a front yard setback of 25 feet, we would measure from the property line to the building line.
Would you mind clarifying exactly what it should be saying? Because the verbiage on this is quite frankly just really confusing.
Hopefully this is resolved. Do you have the building? Apparently says... Sorry, the diagram. Shows it as such. According to the definition.
We're just going to update the diagram to show that then?
Correct.
Okay.
There was some confusion in the last discussion?
Yeah.
About this, and we just want to make sure everything matches.
Okay. Clarify it for me then. Any other questions on this one?
Well, I just want to further, so let's say it's a 65-foot wide lot, okay? So we take 65, we multiply that by 60%. That gives them... Thank you. A garage width of 39 feet. Okay? Or 22 feet, whichever is greater. There's other standards that come into play, setback requirements, side yard setbacks, there's lot coverage and things like that. So 39-foot wide garage is wide, there's no doubt about it. Your average garage is, for a two-car garage, is 22 feet. So we need the commission to determine if that should also be adjusted, if 60% of a lot width is too much. It does give people an opportunity to have a three-car garage if they so choose. And they have the right lot width.
They've already put 44-foot garages over there in those townhouses. And the 54-foot wide building.
Right, each dwelling is a 22-foot wide garage. Or 16.
No. Going from outside to outside is 44.
No, you go from the edge of the door to the edge of the door.
It shows from the edge of the building to the edge of the building.
Right, that's the next one we're going to discuss. We can talk about that. That describes the garage width, again on C. Garage is measured between garage doors. And then with multiple garage doors, the distance is measured between the edge of the outmost doors. So it's measured door to door. Well, the edge of the door to the edge of the door, not what's in between and not what's on the side.
It's still part of the garage.
Understand completely, but that's not how it's defined. So that's the clarifying stuff that we need to discuss.
I think that that's a fair question though, because when we're saying outermost edge, that should include anything between the multiple doors.
Exactly.
And then you have the case of Jim and Michelle Platt on Apple Valley Road. They built your standard two-car garage, but purchaser of their home wanted addition off to it for a little workshop, so I want to say those were four or five feet. So we have to take that into consideration as well.
I mean, it's just based on the current wording saying from outermost, we would include everything between the outermost. So if you want that to be different, we need to clarify that it's the combined width of the doors rather than the gap in between them.
I apologize. It does include the gap in between, but not what's to the left or to the right of those outermost doors.
Right, right, no, that's, that's normal, but like from what you're talking about, because it's multiple garage doors, we have to count everything in between the two of them.
So you have two 16-foot garage doors with the three, I can't remember if it's three or four foot space in between.
Okay. So that's like 36 roughly then? Yeah, I mean, I don't think that this amendment section is about changing that percentage. It's just about how it's being defined in the picture so it matches. If we want that to change, we have to do something different. If I'm correct.
If I can jump in for a second. Yes, that is correct. Because again, it was, if you recall the last discussion about this, it went back and forth, why didn't the image match the verbiage? And again, to ease up some of the confusion, let's make sure that the diagram matches the verbiage. I think Paul, you even had mentioned that during that discussion.
You can talk during public comment.
Donovan, my suggestion would be is that you go through all of your sections. If the commission has questions, they can ask them. And then, once you're done, we'll allow public comment, and we can let the commissioners debate and decide what they want to do.
Thank you. So we discussed the garage width. Moving on to item 2, section 8.3. H. .3 requires a 15% minimum transparency applied to a facade, and it's based on the entire area of the facade. So that includes the front of the garage, if there's an attached garage. When applying this to the homes that are being built by the three or four developers, it's very difficult for them to meet this requirement. They're putting windows in just to put windows in, that don't make sense. The homes that have been constructed by these developers, we feel there's enough transparency on them already. We've got the living room windows, the bedroom windows upstairs. One developer has a window in the closet, just an additional window. And this particular section requires that 15% minimum transparency for each street-facing facade. So in the one case, you had a home that is 50... There was approximately 1,200 square feet of surface area. If we were to multiply that by 15%, it's 187 square feet of windows. Your average window is 3 feet by 4 feet, so 12 square feet. So if we were to divide that by 12, let's say, that's almost 16 windows on the side of a house. And so we're seeking to adjust that. We brought this before the Community Development Committee. They felt that perhaps no less than 5% in maintaining the rest of the section, which states windows, entrances, porches, or other architectural features are required in all street-facing facades to avoid the appearance of blank walls. We agree that there shouldn't be a blank wall. We do have one that was built, that was missed, on the corner of Apple Valley and Sage. It's on a dead end, but we do think that there should be, you know, some type of transparency requirements or architectural features or a mixture of both. So you have either change in siding material, you can have horizontal siding until you get to the gable and that switches to a scallop, and then a window on that side with perhaps a freeze board along the middle separating the two floors. You could have shutters or a couple of windows, what have you, but just a combination of different features to break up the appearance of a blank wall. Moving on to item 3. Section 5.1. E defines R4 two-family residential district as, "The R4 two-family residential district would accommodate two-family dwellings on standard-sized lots of 8,712 square feet." The table in section 5-1 states that the minimum lot area per dwelling for R4 zoning is 6,000 square feet per dwelling, so that would require a minimum of 12,000 square-foot lot. If the standard lot size for R4 district is 8,712 square feet, then the minimum lot size per dwelling conflicts with the text, so we're recommending to add another section in there just for two-family dwellings or duplexes. And say the minimum lot size per dwelling is 4,356 square feet. That was recommended by the Community Development Committee, and like I said, we'll include an additional line in that table specifically for two-family dwellings. Item 4, this came up with, I believe it was the proposed Starbucks. Decorative metal fencing is required, a four-foot high decorative metal fence is required around parking lots. It states that it has to be one foot from the curb. Their design professional said if it could be setback anymore because they were worried about car bumpers running into the fence. It's a good point. Design professionals get hung up on little details like that, so I thought it'd be a good time to amend it that. The state that shall be installed within the landscape area. Rather than give it a measurement requirement. And then item 5. We got a complaint about a fence that was installed with, we'll call it the unfinished side facing out. They called it the ugly side. And I was surprised to see that our code did not have anything in there that required a homeowner to place the finished side out towards the neighbors. So we just want to amend the UDO to include that. That the finished side needs to face out for neighboring property owners. Number 6. Staff is recommending including an anti-monotony section for existing vacant lots and future subdivisions that would prohibit multiple dwellings of the same style being constructed next to each other. We have a couple developers, especially the duplexes, that all look the same. And another developer, possibly two developers, that you have the same style of home within a lot or two. So we're looking to change that by saying that no dwelling which is similar in appearance to any dwelling on the same street and within a distance of 200 feet of it. Some municipalities, like Woodstock, has 300 feet. We used to have an anti-monotony section in the previous code. For some reason, it was forgotten or removed when they established the UDO. So I included what the old section said. We can go back to that. And that stated, "With reference to one family and two-family dwelling units and all subdivisions or planned unit developments containing same, there shall be constructed no more than one of said dwellings without regard to whether it is a one- or two-family dwelling of the like exterior design on either side of the street within 330 feet. Change in exterior design shall require more than the mere change of details in the front elevation of a building or window relocation, without substantially changing the size of such windows or changing the location of doors or entrances or roof lines." What we're proposing, like I said, is the 200-foot distance section in there for a dwelling on a corner lot may be considered dissimilar to another if the two dwellings face different streets. The 200-foot separation distance shall be measured between the nearest points on a lot or parcel line. Similar, for the purpose of this subsection, the term similar in appearance shall mean a dwelling which is identical or nearly identical. Variety of characteristics included but not limited to roof type, height, location of windows and doors, and location and measurements of garage doors may be used when determining the presence of monotony. If lots within 200 feet of each other have different housing styles, including but not limited to ranch, bi-level, tri-level, one-and-a-half-story, two-story, or three-story, the difference in housing styles may be significant enough to constitute a dissimilarity. And snout houses, as well as similar residential dwellings where a front-load garage is a dominant feature of a front facade, are discouraged. So a snout house typically is defined as a house where the garage is set in front of the house, the majority of the garage, not just by three feet or four feet, but the majority of the garage is in front of the house. So that's that section. And that's it.
Commission, do you have any questions?
Number 3. Take out 6,000-square-foot park. Lot area per dwelling, is that what you want to do?
To match, yes, to match the verbiage or the definition of a R4 zoning district, which says the standard lot size is 8,712 square feet. So in a two-family dwelling could be top and bottom, side by side.
Say a top and bottom. 4356?
No, because it would be two dwellings. So they'd have, per dwelling, it would be the 4,000.
So we would just be replacing that section in here where it says lot area per dwelling for R4 from 6,000 to the 4356?
Correct.
The question I had was in regards to these snout houses. And there we just say that they are discouraged. What does that mean from a enforcement perspective? Because that's pretty vague.
I agree. You bring up a good point. So we should probably further define snout house. In our UDO, and I believe it's in this section that we're discussing with the illustration, I want to say it's any lot that was added after 2001 maybe? Section 5 of that 8.3H says, "To protect the character of older neighborhoods, the provision of this section 8.3H5 shall apply only to lots subdivided prior to January 1st, 2000. Attached garages must be setback a minimum of 5 feet from the front building facade line. This facade line does not include architectural features whatsoever." So any lot subdivided prior to 2000, the garage has to be setback 5 feet from the house. During the discussion of, when Greenway was looking for the variance, several people had gone out and looked at the subdivision. They were worried about garages being the main focal point, but they said, well, all the homes over, out there, the garages are the main focal point for the most part. They stick, depending on which side of the street you're coming up on, you see the garage first before you do the house because the garages aren't setback. So seeking clarification on whether you want to have all homes have a garage setback 5 feet or in line with the front of the house and not sticking out in front of the house.
Thoughts on that? I was under the impression that it should be with a lot line.
Can you speak up?
I was just wondering what our thoughts are on the garage being further out than the front of the house, because that also extends the front of the house line for any additional units on the property too.
Not answering your question, but gentlemen, as you all speak, can you make sure your microphones are closed so that everyone can hear?
Thank you. Something I want with opinion on that one.
Yeah, so a snout house, as I've seen it, is a garage that, where the majority of the garage is in front of the house.
Right.
And so we want to avoid that. I don't know if we could put further structure to it to say no more than 50%, you know, depth of the garage, no more than 25% can be in front of the building lot line. Or the front of the garage has to be in line with the front of the house.
What's the current maximum? Is it that 60% we're talking about?
For garage width.
Yeah, so... That doesn't involve height though either. Because when we're talking about the facade and the transparency there as well, because we're talking about changing it from 15 to 5, and garage of course does not count towards that percentage anyways. I'm thinking about those types of houses where majority of it is upstairs, so you think about people who build on top of the garage. We run into that situation where a lot of these newer houses were getting... We run into that situation where a lot of these newer houses were getting looked like they're mostly on or behind the garage. So I get why that's in here. I just, that are discouraged, it's so vague, we can't do anything about it. So we need to get better verbiage for that, section six of that specifically.
I think it ultimately depends on if you guys want to permit them or not. If the general consensus is the preference is to not have snout houses, then the preference would be to indicate that they aren't allowed. If somebody wants to come in and request a variance for certain, you know, special circumstances that would warrant such a house, you could do it that way. But obviously, that presumes that the preference is to not allow those as a matter of course, and then allow somebody to come in and request a variance.
And this one doesn't have to be settled tonight? It'd be carried over, so if you, I could provide examples at the next meeting, or email everyone examples, different styles? You know, if that helps?
Yeah, I prefer if we just got more information on that section specifically. Another question I had, and this was just for clarification purposes, when we're talking about the facade percentages, is that only for homes, or is that also for businesses as well?
This, only for residential dwellings. And you had said something about the garage not being included, that if it's an attached garage, that makes up the entire facade, so that does count towards the overall square footage for the 15%.
Yeah, it's just it's not the transparent portion, correct? What was, would you count a garage door that has windows in it?
Yes, if it's attached, yeah.
No further questions from me.
When you in any way, shape, or form, this is really simple, through the picture. Just withdraw the picture. What is a snout home? A snout home is a home where the garage is out in front of the front building line. That's what it's now. It's really that simple, and that's why you prohibit it. That picture doesn't allow it. It requires that the garage not be in front of the building. And any house built, beginning in any house subdivided before 2001, it actually has to be at least five feet behind it, but not in front of the building line. That's a snout house. And it's literally, it's very simply defined as that, just prohibit it. But really, you can do one of two things here. The reason we're not Barrington, and the reason we're not Lake Forest, is because nobody ever bothered thinking like Barrington or Lake Forest around here. They all said, "Oh, we're poor. Oh, we have nothing." You're wrong. You know what you can't get in Barrington and Lake Forest right now? Or even Crystal Lake? Affordable land for development, what you can get in Harvard. Thank heavens, we have people protecting us so that they're not selling it down the river and selling it to slummoors. Whoopsie daisy. I'm sorry, but that's a lot what this is looking like. Anything that's difficult, let's get it out of there. And when we say developers, there's no plural here, it's one developer. I built a house in this town in 2006. It's after I built my first house in this town in 2009. And I own another home that is right behind all of this. So I have a very real economic interest in this thing, but I'm a citizen of Harvard. I have a very real interest in living in a beautiful town. I have a very real interest in actually making the language, if there's ambiguity, God bless you. I'm telling you, I'm trying to do this for a living, and I didn't spot it in myself. The ambiguity was created by people trying to turn around and rubber stamp what had already been mistakenly framed. Let's cut to the chase. And that's water under the bridge. That isn't the point. The point here is, is rather than double down on our mistake, can we please just admit we made the mistake? And if you don't even want to do that, I don't care. What I do want is I want the language to look like the picture. That picture is what houses in Harvard that are being built today should look like. And if transparency requirements are difficult, and if all these things are too difficult for these developers, tell them to go to Woodstock, where the UDO is about three times thicker, or heaven forbid, Crystal Lake. If you've never seen it, I have. I read all of them, every UDO in this county in the last month. We have one of the most pathetically weak UDOs in the entire county, and we're going to gut it further. I'm not joking. You don't believe me? Go look them up. They are far more detailed. They require far more. When I built my house in 2006, they had this cool thing. You've been approved on it. It was called the internet. I didn't hire an architect. I went online. How many thousands of our taxpayer dollars have now been squandered trying to turn around and retroactively rubber stamp and proactively approve a bunch of stuff that has no business being here under the UDO? Because one guy couldn't go out and spend $2,000 going online and filling in a bunch of questions and answers. It's literally that simple. I got a house that had three bedrooms, it had a built-in woodworking shop, it had everything I needed, and it was in the plan. And you can get all that online today. Want 15% transparency? Go online. They will give you a design for a beautiful house at a price point you select. Don't believe me? Go home and look it up. We are doing all of this because people don't, they somehow think that the weakest UDO in the county is not weak enough. Ladies and gentlemen, I love this town. I was born and raised in this town. I have many investments in this town, and I will die in this town, God willing. And I want it to be a nicer town than the day I was born. And the proposed amendments to the UDO backwards. Make the language look like the picture. Thank you all very much.
Chairman, if I might, say a few words as well. As a gentleman pointed out, he built his home based on a 2006 code. The UDO that we are talking about was approved in 2018. Now, pictures, diagrams sometimes can be off. And we have never argued or discussed that the language should be changed to make a diagram look right. If the diagram is off, the diagram needs to be fixed to match the language. Because what's to say another diagram is off in somewhere else, and we got to what, change the language and potentially even weaken the language to match a diagram because it was off? The verbiage was there since 2018. We are making the diagram match the verbiage.
Verbiage is correct. The verbiage does not say it's the lot. There are two sentences describing the building line. It talks about the building wall. If it was as simple as the building line is the lot line, it would probably say that. There's two sentences. Please read them. It discusses the building wall. It says, "How do we define that building line?" It gives you a definition. And that C, those two Cs are the building line. It's not how you measure the garage. It is showing you how to come up with a building line. There is no way you should have 60% of a lot line. And it's not even a garage, it's the garage door. They're asking you to do 60% of the entire lot line to be their garage door. Trust me, it's a lot. That is what their verbiage says. It does that. The building line, it is defined as the building wall. Why is the building wall in that sentence if you are not fit in? If it wanted to be just, hey, the building line is the lot line, that would be a much shorter sentence. But it defines exactly how you measure the building wall. Please read those two sentences on the definition. There are building lines, there are lot lines, there are definitions. Please read through that. It is correct. It is not incorrect with that picture. The only incorrect is that they don't like it. It is not incorrect.
Commissioner, have any other comments?
Vote on the petition. Want to take these one by one?
Yeah, if we could.
Just so we're clear, you essentially have three options. You can approve it as recommended, you can approve it with conditions, or you can deny
A motion on number one.
Hold on, Lloyd. Just so we're clear, it's a motion to deny. So if you say yes, that means you're in favor of denial. Just to clarify, it kind of gets backwards sometimes.
Commissioner Albertson?
Nay. Nay.
Previson?
Yes.
Hereley?
Yes.
Patnod?
Nay.
Arbenetti? Three to two. Motion is defeated.
Do we make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
Make a second. Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Previson?
Yes.
Hereley? Patnod?
Yes.
Arbenetti?
Yes.
Albertson?
Yes.
Motion is approved, four to one.
Which one of these did you want, guys want to hold back?
That is, yeah, number six.
A motion to approve, number two.
Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Hereley?
No.
Patnod? Arbenetti?
Yes.
Albertson?
Yes.
Previson?
No.
Motion's approved, three to two.
Number three.
Motion to approve, number three.
Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Hereley?
No.
Patnod?
Yes.
Arbenetti?
Yes.
Albertson?
Yes.
Previson?
No.
Motion is approved, three to two.
A motion to approve, number four.
Second on number four.
Commissioner Patnod?
Yes.
Arbenetti?
Yes.
Albertson?
Yes.
Previson?
Yes.
Hereley?
Motion approved, five to zero.
Number five, fences have to be decorative side out. Motion?
A motion to approve, number five.
Clerk, please call a roll.
Commissioner Patnod?
Yes.
Arbenetti?
Yes.
Albertson?
Yes.
Previson?
Yes.
Hereley?
Yes.
Motion approved, five to zero.
Number six, is the anti-monotony section?
Yeah, the motion to deny, number six. Motion to deny, number six.
Or do you want to just refer it back?
I mean, refer it back, yes, but that wasn't listed as an option.
If you're, I guess, I should have clarified, if you're not going to take, make a formal recommendation, you can ask to shift it back to committee to get more information before it comes back to this body, sorry.
I would like to, motion to send this back.
Second?
Second.
Clerk, please call a roll.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Motion to close the hearing? Motion that way? Second?
Second.
Clerk, please call a roll.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Works report?
The only report I have is I'd like to introduce Jeanette Nunez, who will be my replacement when I retire in a couple of weeks.
Hi, Jeanette.
Hi. That's all I have.
And I have no report. Motion to adjourn the hearing.
Motion to adjourn.
Clerk, please call a roll.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Double check the back of your packet. I have a very good last page. I had a water bill from somebody. Oh? I'm the new one? Yeah. No, apparently you didn't. You just got to pay it. I hope not. I think.
Yeah. Yeah. Be interesting.
The one that we did last week, the one that we had first.
See you guys later.
See you.